Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June 8th Maplewood City Council Meeting. I want to start out this meeting a little bit different tonight. I want to start it off with a moment of silence in memory of George Floyd. So for council members and staff and all those listening, we'll begin our moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Watching George Floyd in front of our eyes was gut-wrenching and it was disturbing. These were several of the most horrifying minutes on video that I have ever witnessed. Mr. Floyd struggles to breathe and he cries for help, while the officer appears indifferent, kneeling on his neck, cutting off his ability to breathe, and the other three officers failed to intervene. I was outraged and sickened by what I saw. Our hearts go out to the Floyd family. I'm saddened for the people of color in Minneapolis, St. Paul, here in Maplewood, and across our nation. We stand with all those calling for institutional reforms. As an attorney and public official, I hold the values of our Constitution dear. Through the course of our nation's history, the right to protest has forced people to pay attention to injustice, and it has moved them to action. Let's keep up that momentum, because what's happening in our communities reminds us how much further we have to go when it comes to social justice and creating equitable opportunities in education, employment, housing, and how our communities are policed. After processing the initial horror, my mind focused to Maplewood, our community, our Public Safety Department, and specifically our police officers. I asked myself, had I as a council member and now mayor done all that was in my power to make Maplewood a more equitable community that ensures harmony, justice, and equitable opportunities for all in our community? Indeed, I've received numerous calls and emails asking, what is Maplewood doing? Some calling for defunding our police department, others demanding change, and others simply asking, what are we doing? Of course, we all need to do much, much more. I and the members of this council don't have all the answers. We need the community's help going forward. We can and must continue doing this together. Acknowledging that we've taken only incremental steps on a long, complicated journey, there are points of pride in what Maplewood and our community members have accomplished so far. I'd like to start by recognizing Public Safety Director Scott Nadeau, whom I'll call on in just a few moments. In the last three years, our police department has made significant progress improving our policing practices, engaging the community, and hiring officers that better reflect Maplewood's demographics. Even before Chief Nadeau arrived, we had witnessed systemic issues that needed to be addressed. In 2014, we saw the unrest in Ferguson and New York. And by 2016, with the killing of Philando Castile here in Minnesota, enough was enough. Then-Chief Paul Schnell, at the direction of myself and Councilmembers Juneman and Smith, who are in council with me, developed Maplewood's response. We started the Use of Force Task Force. It helped us set the groundwork for reshaping our approach to policing. Councilmember Neblet served on that task force and now sits on the council. In the last few years, our efforts have gone far beyond focusing on just policing. Maplewood prides itself on a high quality of life, a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Policing alone will not help us ensure that. We need to build all of the community's support systems that lead to success. The council adopted community inclusiveness as one of our strategic objectives by which we measure and make all of our decisions. The strategic objective states that we will strive to create a community that is engaged, tolerant, and compassionate about everyone, to further build a community that embraces and respects diversity and that uses different perspectives and experiences to build an inclusive and equitable city for all. As elected leaders, we have all worked closely with our two school districts to help them pass construction referendums to build world-class educational facilities that meet students' evolving needs. Both superintendents came in during that effort and showed us photos of how far into disrepair our schools had become. We, as a council and as a community, supported these important educational initiatives because our students are our future. Students need good jobs and a pathway to middle-class careers. That's why we partnered with a St. Paul nonprofit to host a high school career fair, which attracted more than 300 students with diverse backgrounds from a variety of East Metro schools. Everyone deserves a clean, suitable, and safe place to live. After working with our housing providers, Maplewood has launched a rental housing licensing program to force bad landlords to shape up, ensuring clean, secure, well-maintained properties and units for all residents of Maplewood. During the recent demonstrations for social justice, I was heartened to see so many different faces in the crowds. That's important because while Minneapolis, St. Paul, Maplewood, and some other first-ring suburbs have diverse populations, their neighborhoods, including some of ours, are less integrated. One of the things I'm most proud of is that when we hold large-scale community gatherings, we've been able to bring all of our different backgrounds together in one celebration, giving community members a chance to meet and talk about shared experiences. It's also created a space for them to see our police officers and our officers to see them in a relaxed, informal, non-enforcement setting. It's helped melt some of the tensions because it allows people an opportunity to really connect with each other. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we're not able to hold these gatherings for the foreseeable future. That's why it's so important now that we continue working creatively together on these issues. I'm looking to folks on this DS with me, members of our newly-formed Multicultural Advisory Committee and our community as a whole, to move Maplewood forward. Inclusiveness is one of our strategic objectives, and if we keep that in the front of our minds as we all consider what we can do individually and collectively as a council, a resident, or a business in Maplewood, we will make true change happen in our city. At this time, I've asked Chief Nadeau to address us and share his perspective on what Maplewood Police have done and plan to do as we move forward in the aftermath of the killing of George Floyd. Chief Nadeau?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to the members of the City Council. The murder of George Floyd on May 25th at the hands of Minneapolis police officers has led to more than just protests, rioting, and arson. It has brought forward some fundamental questions that we all need to answer about race, equal justice, bias, and policing in America. I agree with the mayor. The brutal murder of Mr. Floyd at the hands of police officers was one of the most disgusting things I've ever witnessed. And quite frankly, it made me embarrassed, in many ways, of the profession that I've served in for 33 years. But this is not the first time that these issues have been brought to the forefront, as we've seen far too many examples of police use of force ending in the death of an unarmed citizen, who too often are people of color. In the wake of this tragic death and in a conversation that is occurring both nationally and locally, we have been receiving a lot of questions from our citizens in regards to, what is the city of Maplewood and its police department doing in regards to biased policing, equal justice, building relationships, workforce diversity, and use of force issues? I believe that our citizens are right to be asking these questions, and I'd like to give you a brief overview of how Maplewood has been addressing these issues over the course of the last four years. In the wake of yet another tragedy, the police shooting of Philando Castile in July of 2016, the city of Maplewood formed a citizen task force to work with the police to discuss policing and use of force issues. The task force included citizens from diverse communities and a city council representative who spent months and a number of meetings educating themselves on issues concerning policing and police use of force issues. This group, which called itself the Use of Force Task Force, engaged the police department in facilitated dialogue and went through the entire use-of-force policy and training programs. They wrote an important prologue to the police department's policy manual that serves as the basis for when force is reasonable and in alignment with community standards and priorities. The group's work was an important opening on the difficult issues surrounding police use of force. When their work was done, Maplewood police officers had a better understanding of the support and the expectations of their community in regards to issues regarding force. Wanting to follow up on this work, the City Council created a police advisory council, which met several times in an effort to assist the police department and offering guidance on policing issues from a community perspective. The group also performed functions such as sitting on police interview panels so that the community would have input on officers that we would want to be police in Maplewood. After several months of meetings, it was agreed that the group's work was limited by its charter, and other options were explored for a group of citizens comprising our diverse community who could assist the police through input, planning, and assistance. Reports suggested that the Multicultural Advisory Committee model, prevalent in several Hennepin County communities, would be a better and more flexible resource to the police department because of its formation. Recruitment was done, and a start date with 12 of our members was established. That has now been delayed due to COVID-19 concerns, and we are presently looking at forming that group with the starting on a Zoom meeting. We believe that having a dedicated group of community members assisting and advising the police department has shown value and will continue to be an integral part of planning, hiring, advising, and reflection into the future. In addition to working with citizens advisory and task force groups, the police department has taken a number of steps in regards to hiring, training, and connecting with our community in the past three years. In hiring, the Maplewood Police Department, working with our Human Resources Department, has invested a great deal of time and effort into finding the best applicants for our city and ensuring that they better reflect our diverse community. In the past three years, we have seen a 125% increase of non-traditional police officers going from eight to 18 women and people of color on our police department. We've had to get out of the box about bringing people in with different experiences and different cultural backgrounds in entry-level positions, and then assisting them and mentoring them to become great Maplewood police officers. We have prioritized training and have also mandated that all sworn staff complete training in important and impactful topic areas such as crisis intervention training, implicit bias, and de-escalation. More than just firearms and defensive tactics, Maplewood officers increasingly have the tools that they need to be successful in 21st century policing philosophies. Just as important as training is putting our police staff in situations where they can build relationships, work with, and get to know the amazing residents that make up the Maplewood community. Starting in 2018, we required every police employee, sworn and non-s sworn, to do the important work of getting to know and serve our community. Each staff member is required to be involved in activities that build the important bonds of trust and respect that are vital for us to have that sort of relationship with our community. Our officers now hold dozens of events in our apartments and manufactured home communities. They work with our schools and senior citizen groups to ensure that those relationships are strong. They attend a variety of community events. They volunteer for charitable causes, and over 20 of them are currently mentors to children, many of whom are children of color through our school-based Big Brother Big Sister program at Weaver Elementary School. We have gone from a couple of dozen hours per year to thousands of hours per year in outreach and service to our community. While this work and these programs are important and impactful, our community also expects transparency in what we're doing and how we use enforcement in our city. In addition to citywide initiatives showing progress on council priorities, the police department also utilizes social media and a number of publications to inform our community. Our police department's strategic plan shows our community what we plan to do and how. Our annual report reflects the accomplishments, challenges, and major events that we faced that year. Our Community Information Report is one of the most comprehensive summaries of police enforcement activity to include factors such as age, race, other demographics, and issues like victimology that is published by any metro area police agency. The public's concerns around police use of force are valid, particularly in light of events happening in Minnesota and around the country, and every police department needs to be accountable. Whether it's policy, training, or supervision, all three of these play an important role in police use of force encounters. In Maplewood, we're fortunate to have body-worn cameras and policies that mandate their use. Because of body-worn cameras, every use-of-force incident is examined in detail to ensure that any use of force that was necessary reflects the training and best practices that our community expects. This is a safeguard to both our officers and our community and the best investigative tool when it comes to use-of-force incidents. Mayor and members of the City Council, while I've listened to some of what the city and the police department has done in the last four years, I can tell you that we're far from done. Our police department needs and our community expects that we will continue to pursue a path that is just for all of our residents and where every person in Maplewood is respected. We need to continue this important dialogue with our residents, including those from diverse backgrounds, and build trusting and respectful relationships with our diverse faith groups and communities. Our Multicultural Advisory Committee, community dialogues, and continued efforts on training, building relationships, and diversifying our workforce are important next steps. If there are any residents who have questions regarding to any of these issues, we make sure that all of our policies, reports, and publications are available online. For those who have additional questions, of course, we're happy to talk to any resident and share information or hear their concern. I hope that this short summary of the path that we are on for the past four years is helpful for our residents' knowledge. And please note that our entire agency is committed to continuous improvement in this regard, not only this year but in years to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Nadeau. I really appreciate that update. Councilmembers and those present, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Sint, would you please take the roll call for us?
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Knutson?
Here.
Councilmember Neblet?
Present.
Councilmember Juneman?
Here.
Mayor Abrams?
Here. Thank you very much for that. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, councilmembers. We got a note from City Manager Coleman that we're going to remove item J3. City Manager Coleman, would you please give us a little background on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The applicant will need three different approvals from the City Council, and they have asked us to withdraw the application tonight so that we could do one approval process, address all three applications at the same time. I will add that one of the applications will be about a tax increment financing request, and that may take more than one meeting, but they've asked to put all of those applications together in one package for your review in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you very much. And so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of J3.
I move the amended agenda.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Knutson. The amended agenda with the removal of J3. Any further discussion? Tonight's order is going to be Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Knutson, Councilmember Neblet, and Councilmember Juneman. So let's start with you, Councilmember Smith. Any other comments or discussion?
I don't think so.
Okay. Councilmember Knutson?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Neblet?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Juneman?
No, thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, then let's vote on the approval of the amended agenda. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neblet?
Aye.
Councilmember Juneman?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes the approval of the agenda. Before I jump into the approval of the minutes, I just wanted to remind the council members that at the end of our council meeting, we'll go through that same round robin order, and I'll ask each of you for any closing discussion or comments that you'd like to make at the end of the meeting. All right, so moving on to the approval of the minutes, is there a motion to approve the Monday, May 26th, Maplewood City Council minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Neblet, seconded by Juneman. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Smith?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Knutson?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Neblet?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Juneman?
No, thank you.
All right, hearing none, then let's vote on the approval of the minutes to the May 26th meeting. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neblet?
Aye.
Councilmember Juneman?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Moving on to appointments and presentations. City Manager Coleman, will you give us the council calendar update, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the City Council. The calendar is meant to be informational and intended to provide the council with an indication of things that we're currently planning for upcoming agenda items and for our workshops. As you know, since late March, we have suspended having workshops because of the limitations on having indoor meetings together with social distancing. And until that becomes more favorable or the council decides that they feel safe coming back to work, we will continue to not hold workshops at this time. We recognize that there are technical and other difficulties with the council, having challenges not to be able to meet in person, but unless directed to change that, we will continue to not have workshop items. It is our hope that within the next few weeks, we will be able to do some reinstatement with social distancing so that we can begin discussions on the 2021 budget. So with that, we have for June 22nd, which will be our meeting in two weeks, we will be doing an overview of the 2021-25 CIP and the 2020 budget adjustments that have been made. And then on July 13th, we will really get into the details of that capital improvement plan. With that, Mayor and Council, I would just ask if you have other items that you would like staff to be aware of, to bring back information to you. We would be happy to receive that information this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Coleman. I wanted to take the temperature of the council. We had talked at our last meeting about everyone's comfort level, about getting back together on June 22nd. And I guess what I'd like to do is we'll do a round robin on this and just see where you are. And of course, we would be socially distanced and following all the guidelines set out by the governor's executive order. So that, I just wanted to know what you were thinking about that. Councilmember Smith?
I'd say my feelings haven't changed. I would defer to others in the group and find the other way.
Okay. Councilmember Knutson?
I'm fine with coming back to meetings.
Okay. Councilmember Neblet? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's okay. I'm trying to, I am trying to be thoughtful in my head. You know, I, I mean, okay. I, I think I would be okay coming back on the 22nd as long as we have the ability to distance.
Okay. Councilmember Juneman?
I guess I'll go along with the group, although I would prefer July.
Okay. What I would like to ask is, we had talked about this before about, and I want to make sure everyone is comfortable. We all have our very different circumstances, and I certainly want to be respectful of that. And so with that in mind, I would like to ask City Manager Coleman to work with Mr. Folds on either everyone coming back or, in the event that some people would feel more comfortable, doing a hybrid where they may be at home with an iPad, that we can figure out the technology so that we could start moving towards coming back together. And I would ask that you would kind of put together what our options are so that we could, if some of us were inclined to come back together and do a meeting in person, that we would be able to work that out. And then also have the hybrid option if some council members felt more comfortable staying at home, that they could use their iPads. So I would ask City Manager Coleman if you could work that out with Mr. Folds.
Certainly, Mayor. I know Mr. Folds has been looking into the options to do that, so we will have something for you in the next few days to let you know how we're going to be able to accommodate that.
Wonderful. And I want to thank Mr. Folds for doing such a marvelous job with this technology through this challenging time that we continue to be able to accomplish the city's business. And, you know, also, I want to thank City Clerk Sint because this is a different way for us to be running meetings as well. So thank you to staff for keeping us up and running with technology. And hopefully, we can transition smoothly back to being all together. I know I'm looking forward to seeing everyone. So thank you with that. Our council members, are there any council presentations? I don't think we had any. Okay, then, moving on to our... Okay, then moving on to our consent agenda. I know I wanted to highlight number two. I had a question on that. And council members, would anyone like to highlight or discuss any of the other consent agenda items? Councilmember Smith?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Knutson?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Neblet?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Juneman?
No, thank you.
Okay. My question before we consider a motion on this was to ask Mr. Love if he would comment about the resolution in the consent agenda for reduction of retainage on a construction contract. Can you, Mr. Love, please comment on that? Because from the staff notes, it appears that the vast majority of project improvements were completed, and so that the contractor is requesting return of a portion or, well, it just says $63,146.95. Could you explain that, please? Is the entire project done? Is there, are we retaining any other fees? Could you fill us in on that, please?
Absolutely, Mayor and Council. This is, project is related to the Wakefield Park Building Construction Project. The project is essentially completed, both the building and the landscaping. One of the things that occurred is we had an extended warranty for the landscaping work to ensure that everything came through the winter. That inspection is going to be happening within the next few weeks by our consultant. Once that is done, we'll be bringing this item back to you for closure of the project and final payment on the project. So what this one is, is the contractor has requested to reduce the retainage on the portion of the project related to the building to 5% to 0.5%. So overall, on the project, we retain 5% of the payments as retainage to make sure that everything gets done and completed. We have $102,913 in retainage on the project overall. This release is related to the building, as that is all done, and we're not looking for any inspection on that yet. So that releases $63,146, which leaves us about $39,767 of retainage related to the landscaping. So when we bring this item back towards, to council for final payment and acceptance, we would also be releasing the last of the retaining on this project.
Thank you for that, Mr. Love. Councilmembers, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Knutson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Juneman, the motion for the, to approve the consent agenda, items one through three. I think I'm confident enough that we'll go right to the vote, and I don't believe there's any other further discussion on it. Let's vote. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neblet?
Aye.
Councilmember Juneman?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We have no public hearings tonight. Moving on to unfinished business. Finance Director Paul Seth, this is yours concerning the award of the sale of GO Improvement Bonds, Series 2020B.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can everyone hear me?
Can hear you just fine.
Wonderful. I was kicked out once tonight and had to, had to log back in, so I just want to make sure everything's working. Tonight, the City Council will be considering approving a resolution which will award the sale of General Obligation Improvement Bonds, Series 2020B. The council authorized the sale of these bonds on May 11, 2020. The bonds are going to be used to finance the street projects this summer, the reconstruction projects. And the, the amount of, the original amount of the sale was estimated to be $6,875,000. That sale was held this morning with some special provisions. The underwriter is offering a, quite a large premium, so in the structure of the bonds has changed. So you do have a revised resolution for a lower amount of the bonds that was provided with supplemental materials this afternoon. Our bond consultants, Bruce Kimmel from Ellers facilitated this bond sale along with his colleagues, and he is here tonight to give you the details of the sale and give you his recommendations. So at this time, Madam Mayor, I would ask that you recognize Mr. Bruce Kimmel from Ellers.
Mr. Kimmel, are you with us?
I am, Mayor, yes.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you, council members. I'll just give you a brief overview of the sale results. As Ellie mentioned, we had a very successful sale. We received five bids on the city's behalf this morning at 10:00 AM. And if you have the sale day report in front of you, and if I could ask you to flip to the page, the third page of the PDF that's titled Bid Tabulation, you can see that the winning bid came from Northland Securities. If you look in the far right-hand column, that's titled True Interest Rate, you can see that Northland's bid, all things considered and calculated on an apples-to-apples basis with the other bids, came at 1.43%. This is really remarkable, and it reflects how low interest rates have come since the bond market really stabilized and recovered in, starting in early April. And so quite an excellent result. And what's also noteworthy here is even the last place bid from Stiefel Nicholas came in at 1.51%, so only eight basis points or 0.08% of difference between the first place and the fifth place bid, which really just indicates how aggressively underwriting firms were competing to win these bonds from the city of Maplewood. I would also point out that when we presented the pre-sale report to the council on May 11, we had estimated an interest rate of 2.06% for this bond issue. Now granted, we had some cushion built in. We always try to add in at least 25 basis points or 0.25% just to make sure, you know, we're not giving you too optimistic of a projection. But even when you back that out, we were still almost 40 basis points better than where the market was at in early, early May. So congratulations to all of you there for that excellent result. Ms. Paul Seth also mentioned the premium bid from Northland. I'll just touch on that briefly. If you see on the top of that bid tabulation page, you can see that Northland's coupon rates started out at 4% and then dropped to 2% after the call date on the bonds. And I won't go into all of the bond math nitty-gritty, although I would really like to, but I know you have other things on your agenda. But you can, you can see then in the column next to that, that the re-offering yields, those are really truly the net effective interest rates that the city is paying on each of those maturities. And those are the, the interest rates that range from 0.4% up to 0.1, or up to 1.6%. So that really explains how the overall interest rate is closer to 1.4% for the overall 15-year bond issue. But I just wanted to explain that that's really the basis for the premium bid. And so that was over $600,000 of additional money that they were wanting to pay the city of Maplewood for these bonds. Now, after talking with Ms. Paul Seth, we confirmed that the city doesn't need additional funding for the two improvement projects that you're undertaking. So we used that net premium along with some unused issuance costs that we had built into the preliminary bond issue to reduce the size of the bonds by that full $675,000. So in case you were wondering how we were able to drop the bond issue by that much, that's, that's the rationale there. Why don't I also just touch briefly on the debt service results? I won't go into a lot of detail here, but I would note that after factoring in the lower principal amount of the bonds and the slightly higher coupons on the bonds, still, the net result for the city is that over 15 years, you, as well as the asset payers, will be paying a total of about $400,000 less on this bond issue than what we had projected back in May. So the, the true bottom line result is, is about $400,000 of savings as opposed to what we had estimated before the bond issue. And then finally, Mayor and council members, I did want to touch on the S&amp;P rating affirmation, and those are the last several pages of the sale day report. As you may know, the city's AA+ rating was affirmed with flying colors last week as part of, as part of this bond issuance process. Ms. Paul Seth, along with Mr. Rube and Mr. Thompson and Mr. Love, all did an excellent job of preparing for this rating discussion and then sharing information on the phone call with the S&amp;P analyst. And really, this was a very experienced analyst, one who's rated the city before, and she had very few questions because the city had basically answered all of her questions ahead of time. But we did have a very productive discussion. Of course, they did have questions about COVID-19 and the effects of the pandemic on the city. Your staff did an excellent job of discussing how you do and don't expect that to impact the city's finances and operations. And really, there were no lingering questions or concerns from that. In addition, I should just note also, S&amp;P is aware that next year, you plan on financing a new fire station, and then the year after, you'll probably have some additional road projects or street projects. And they really had no concerns about that as well. So I can answer any questions you have about specific aspects of the rating report, but all in all, it was a very smooth and resounding affirmation of the city's AA+ rating. And why don't I just stop there and ask if you have questions about that or about the bond sale?
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. That was an excellent report, and I am absolutely thrilled with the results. So let's go through the list and see if anyone has any questions for Mr. Kimmel or for Ms. Paul Seth. Councilmember Smith?
One question. As we are, as we are going into a potentially more challenging time as far as funding projects and things like that, is this, is this, and we, and we have as a council sort of been pushing to bring down our debt overall, which I have been certainly supportive of. With this, with these lower interest rates, though, would it make sense for us to consider taking advantage of those and accelerating some projects in the meantime?
Ellie, do you want to go on that first, or should I give?
Mr. Kimmel, please, please go ahead first.
Okay. Thank you, council member. You know, we, we get that question a lot, especially when rates are at historic lows like they are now. And, and I would have to say that there's really no perfect answer. I think conversations with your, your leadership team, your finance director, your city manager, your public works director, getting a handle on what project costs are likely to inflate versus which aren't, and, and what is that likely or possible rate of inflation would really be key considerations. Because you're, you're touching on something. If you can borrow money at, you know, 1.5% for 15 years, and that's a fixed rate that is not going to change on you, that's very compelling. But I know the city also has indicated an interest and given direction on a debt reduction policy. And that is also a really valid policy priority. So, you know, I would say whatever that Goldilocks solution of the right balance between cash funding for projects and debt funding for projects would be the right, the right answer for Maplewood, of course. But certainly, if, if there are projects that you've been delaying, but that really are at a high priority, and if, if your engineering team and your other, you know, senior management think it's, it would make sense to accelerate, we could certainly take a look at that and also take a look at what that would mean for your overall debt load. I did want to mention, just really fast, you may have noticed in the S&amp;P report that S&amp;P characterizes your debt profile as, quote, "weak." And you may recall that S&amp;P has limited themselves to using just a small handful of descriptors, very strong, strong, adequate, weak, and very weak. So weak isn't really a pejorative. All they're doing is measuring how much debt you have as, as measured by a couple of different ratios, and based on those ratios, you fall in that weak category. That said, debt is only 10% of your overall rating. The economy, the local economy, your management, your budgetary performance and flexibility, those all rank higher than debt load alone in your credit rating. So while it's important to keep an eye on your debt, and while they've expressed interest at S&amp;P in, in your plans on reducing debt, it's not a, an item of concern in and of itself. So I just wanted to share that if that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Paul Seth, did you want to comment at all about?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will make a short comment. We are, of course, watching our amount of our outstanding debt very carefully in Maplewood because we are aware of the, the weak rating and, and the council's desire to bring the debt down to a more reasonable level. We do want to keep in mind that we have a large fire station project that we'll be funding very early next year. We're going to be watching the market very closely over the next six months to determine the right time to issue those bonds. We could issue them as early as January, depending on, you know, what the timing looks like and what the market looks like. So 7.1 million is, is the amount that we'll be issuing. It, it is possible that there is a small amount of room left in our $10 million limit to issue bonds for roads also next year, but we have not planned on doing that in the interest of keeping the debt down and also keeping the amount of debt service affordable. So even, even though the rates are excellent, we still have to, it still has to fit into Maplewood's affordability plan. We have to fit it into our debt service schedule and look at the impact that it has on the property taxes. So we continually analyze those things every time we issue debt, and we will certainly keep this in mind next year, or as we move through this next CIP process, we'll certainly keep it in mind. It doesn't appear at this point that adding a street project would be affordable, but we will certainly continue to analyze that as we move through this CIP process and into next year.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Knutson, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I have some comments. When I read that letter, I didn't have a lot of time, but I read it quickly, but the overwhelming tenor of the letter was that we have a strong financial position, strong management, strong leadership. In particular, interest was that what was described as the weak condition, it also described a situation where we manage that debt load very well, essentially mitigating that concern because of our debt management. So I just wanted to say how strong I think we are recovering from a high debt situation and how our ability to move forward is based on the talent we have in Maplewood. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neblet?
No questions, but I guess timing is everything, and thank you, staff, for being on top of this, saving the city $400,000. There is nothing better to hear. So thank you.
Councilmember Juneman?
No questions. Ditto what was said before me. Thank you, staff. Congratulations one more time. It is so good to be in our chairs and here that we are in a strong position financially, particularly.
That was an excellent report, so thank you very much. Councilmembers, do I have a motion? Now, the motion is for the amended resolution. Just to keep that in mind, because the one in our packet was still the estimate. And so what we're proposing has, is now concerning the $6,000, $6,200,000 principal for the bond. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the resolution awarding the sale of General Obligation Improvement Bonds, Series 2020B, the principal amount of $6,200,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith, the motion to approve the resolution awarding the sale of the General Obligation Improvement Bonds in the amount of $6,200,000 principal. All those in favor? Or let me ask this, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Smith?
Just want to be clear that my question was just a question. It did not have any intent behind it. I don't necessarily think borrowing more is a good idea. I just wanted to ask the question, but that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Councilmember Knutson, any discussion?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Neblet?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Juneman?
No, thank you.
Okay, now for the vote. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neblet?
Aye.
Councilmember Juneman?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes. Thank you, staff, for that excellent report, and thank you, Mr. Kimmel. report. And thank you, Mr. Kimmel, for joining us tonight. The next agenda item is the pedestrian crossing policy. This is Mr. Love.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'm going to go ahead here and share my screen. Hopefully. There we go. So I have a very short presentation here. Council, you may recall that we originally presented the proposed pedestrian crossing policy back on February 24th at our council workshop there. We had our consultant in, and we went through a lot of the technical aspects of this policy, how it works, how we developed it. Tonight, I'm just going to really kind of touch really on a high level of the purpose, but then concentrate a little bit more on how the app looks to implement the proposed plan. So as a reminder, as you guys know, pedestrian and bicycle and are important aspects of the city's multimodal transportation system. So providing safe crossings is very important. The purpose of this policy, we really want to establish guidelines for installation of the crosswalks as well as other safety measures. And these are for the roads that are under the city's jurisdiction. We really want to be able to bring a way of evaluating these issues and requests that are both consistent and equitable throughout our city. As staff, we really, when we looked at the idea of creating a policy like this, we really wanted it to be more of a decision-making tool, something that we use and not just a written policy that we're for it. So the policy was developed, it, it's going to allow us to do two things. You kind of see two images off to the right. These two things, the first is a, is a flow diagram that allows us to identify whether the location is appropriate to have safety measures put in place. If it is, it also then directs us to the second image there with all the boxes, which isn't meant for you to read, but this is a tool that helps us look at, based on site-specific features, what treatment measures, safety measures might be appropriate. So when we look at an implementation plan, we really saw three categories of times that we would be using this policy. The first one would be something that we would begin right away on with our capital improvement projects. So as we reconstruct streets and we either, the streets have pedestrian facilities like sidewalks and trails already, or if we're adding them, we would use this policy to evaluate the crossings and make sure that we're providing the recommended safe crossing measures. So that's kind of a, would be immediate implementation on it. The next one, we categorize as reactive. So this would be as we get requests from citizens or issues come up, it would, we'd be reacting to those. And that's how we would take in future requests from residents as well. This would give us, this policy would give us a decision-making tool to evaluate all those in a very similar manner. And the last one is the proactive evaluations. So for this category, we would look primarily at demonstrated safety issues. If we had an intersection where there is a large history of pedestrian accidents, that, you know, that would, we would make that a primary proactive evaluation. And then the second way we'd look at proactive evaluation is pedestrian generators. So a good example of this is as we look forward to the potential of a rush line or a gold line, and we're establishing these high-volume users and these stations, we can use this policy to make sure that the pedestrian crossings in and around these stations would make sure that they, they are as safe as possible. So the way that the plan works is initially, we would be, as, as for all three of these, we would initially do a desktop evaluation, and then we would schedule field work where we would review the site-specific characteristics as well as collect data such as traffic levels, pedestrian movements. And then we'll use that information with our policy and those flow diagrams that I, I showed you previously to evaluate the need, if it's appropriate and, and at what level. Again, the implementation plan and the policy is written so that known safety issues are a priority. And when we talk about being equitable, if we have multiple needs and we have limited funding, we want to make sure that we're also taking a look at where, where we have a higher-than-average environmental justice population. So we want to make sure that the people that are more likely to be using such a, like bicyclists and pedestrians and public transportation, we want to make sure we're applying that to those areas first. With that, that's the end of my short presentation. I'm available for any questions. Staff does recommend the policy to the council for approval. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Love. That was a very, that was a very helpful presentation. I must say that I really appreciated the slide with the schoolchildren waiting for the bus in the snow. It's 95 out there, I think, right now. And so that was kind of refreshing to look at. So if we have any questions, councilmembers, Councilmember Smith?
Yeah. So will we, at some point, for the more proactive approaches, will we see some sort of a list of kind of a priority list or something like that for potential proactive things?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I think we'll be taking a look at things such as where are our major trail crossings, as well as some of the, like I mentioned, on our transit, future transit projects. Those would be our, potentially our, our initial proactive ones. However, I should note, it's not, we don't have necessarily a list of known bad areas at this time. But there, there's still ways for staff to be proactive in, in, in using this policy.
I understand we don't have a list today. I'm just wondering, will we have kind of a target list that the council can be aware of at some point?
Mr. Love?
Yes, Mayor and Council. So as far as generating a list, again, I think where we're going to start with is taking a look at the major trail crossings or Bruce Fento and Gateway, as well as the transit stations. And certainly, if we, if we end up with a list of areas that we have to, that, that show that we're going to need to evaluate them, we'll certainly make you aware of that as we move forward with that work.
Councilmember Smith? Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Knutson?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Neblet?
Yes, Mr. Love, just a quick question. Does this policy address the, like, the, the current, like, crossing areas that we have? So a lot of them I see are faded. So does this plan take that into, into consideration for, like, putting new coats of paint on it so people can actually see them?
Yeah. Mayor, Mayor and Council, the, the policy doesn't necessarily address the maintenance of them. It's more whether they should be used. I will say that I believe we, we remark everything every other year. So we, we mark half the city each year. We refresh the paint on to half the city each year.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Juneman?
No, thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the pedestrian crossing policy?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Knutson, seconded by Neblet, the motion to approve or to adopt the pedestrian crossing policy. Any further discussion? Councilmember Smith?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Knutson?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Neblet?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Juneman?
No, thank you.
All right, then let's move on to voting. Councilmember Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neblet?
Aye.
Councilmember Juneman?
Aye.
And Councilmember, I vote aye as well. I ran out of the list. Okay, so the motion passes to adopt the pedestrian crossing policy. Moving on to new business, we have our 2019 comprehensive annual report. And Ms. Paul Seth, this is yours as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Even though we are nearly halfway through the year of 2020, we have just recently completed closing out the books for fiscal year 2019. We have been experiencing an audit over the last couple of the months, which is normal. Every year, the city is required to have an audit. Our audit firm is Bergen KDV. And Matt Mayer, the partner who's in charge of the audit, is present tonight, and he will be giving you a presentation on the results of the audit. And he's going to give you a high-level summary of the comprehensive annual financial report for 2019. So, Madam Mayor, I would request that you could recognize Matt Mayer at this time.
Certainly. Welcome, Mr. Mayor, to our council meeting. Are you there?
Read.
Hello?
I've just been unmuted by the host. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Paul Seth, for the introduction. I appreciate the invitation tonight. I have the results of the audit for 2019 to share with you and a little bit of financial analysis as well. I think Director Paul Seth set things up very well by describing the audit process to you. It is the city's responsibility each year to prepare financial statements for the public. And our job as your auditors is to test, examine, and give an opinion on those statements so that users of them can be assured of their accuracy and trust them for a true picture of the city's financial position and results of operations. We provide that assurance through an independent auditor's report, which you'll find in front of the financial statements. We're providing you an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best that we can offer. It means that the numbers we'll be looking at in a little bit are true and accurate picture of the city's financial position and results of operations. We have two additional reports that we're issuing that came in a separate document with your materials. One of those is a report on government auditing standards. And the main objective of that report is to provide on internal control. And it controls are the policies and procedures that you, as a city, have instituted to safeguard the city's assets and to ensure accurate financial reporting at the end of each year. If we have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control, in our opinion, we bring them out through that report. We had none for 2019, so a clean, good report for you there as well. And then finally, the Office of the State Auditor requires that we test you on various statutes that are municipalities in the state of Minnesota. We're talking about things like how you deposit and invest the city's resources, how you do contracting and bidding, making sure there's no conflicts of interest with anyone at administration or the council. And again, if we have any findings, we bring them out through that report. We had none for 19, so a clean report there as well. So I'm providing three reports tonight. All three are the best or the cleanest that I can provide. So I think the 2019 audit can be very much considered successful. Credit to the finance team under the leadership of Director Paul Seth, and our thanks to them as well for their compliance with all of our requests throughout the process. A little bit different year this year. We did everything mostly remotely with the city, and I think we have a very, very high-quality product to review with you this year. So with my remaining time, I'd just like to provide you some analysis on the city's general fund as well as the enterprise funds of the city. I choose these because these are the funds that the city comes with the most input on. And it's, these are the funds that citizens typically interact with the most. When they think of the city of Maplewood, they're generally interacting with the operations of one of these. The first is the general fund. And the general fund covers the main operations of the city, everything from public safety to streets to park and recreation. So again, the one that citizens are most comfortable with and most known for, the city's most known for. Revenue for the year in the general fund was up about 3.2%, about $333,000 from the prior year. It represented about 1.1 million of that. State aids were actually down about $389,000 from the prior year. That had to do with the way that you've chosen to allocate your LGA or local government aid from the state, rather than using it in the general fund this year. You were able to dedicate that to some other funds within the city for other purposes. If we look at the revenue budget, which is the way that I would recommend evaluating the performance of the general fund, rep was actually over budget this year by about $376,000. There was a grant from related to registrar, deputy registrar activity that put intergovernmental revenue over budget. License and permit activity was stronger than anticipated. And largest variance was actually in investment income this year. I think with conservative budget to begin the year, but it was actually a very strong year performance-wise for the city's investments yielding additional income over and above the estimated amount. So I'm going to have you evaluate the general fund in two ways. One, whether you execute it on your budget or not. And then secondly, we're going to talk financial position at the end. And for sure, on the revenue side, the budget was executed very well. The projections that administration provided were pretty much spot-on variance, but it was a positive one of $376,000 or a little less than 2%. The sources of revenue for the year in the general fund, about 78% came from property taxes. And the next highest was intergovernmental at 7.1%. If you go back a year, that number is about 75% for taxes and 9% for intergovernmental. And again, that's a function of the levy going up in the general fund and then utilizing some of that LGA outside of the general fund year over year. But I want to stress the importance of the property tax levy as it relates to the health of the general fund. You were speaking earlier about your, when your bond issuance occurred, and one of the things that they look at is the general fund health and the stability of the revenue flow there. And I think a big function of that was the fact that almost 80% of your general fund revenues are coming from property taxes, a secure and known revenue stream as opposed to some of these others that might be variable depending on the economy and other factors. If we look at spending in the general fund for 2019, it was about $250,000 or only 1.3%. So spending was relatively flat year to year. Again, I'm going to have you look at that in the context of the budget. Administration did an excellent job executing on your budget. And as you can see here, department by department, across the board, all department heads executed on their budget and came in under the spending parameters that you set for them. Spentings for the year, when it came to the general fund budget, was $767,000, about 3.5% under budget for 2019. Large numbers jump out at you. One of those is police. Those were just the typical vacancies that occur in the department throughout the year. Typically, we budget at full capacity or full staffing, and that typically throughout the year does not occur. And then public works as well. There was a conservative budget there for some of the projects, the maintenance and the other work that needed to occur. And ultimately, they were able to execute below the threshold that you established for them as well. So again, using my two measuring sticks, the general budget was executed very well by administration according to your wishes for 2019. As we look at where the dollars are being spent, public safety is a priority of the city. About 45% of the budget goes to police, another 11% to the fire department, around 6% of the budget for 2019. Public works, about 20% of the budget, and you can see administration coming in at about 8%. If we go back a year, those numbers are almost identical. It's almost like I didn't even change the slide here because they're so close. And that indicates to us a very strong budget process. The council consistently from year to year has a, their priorities in line as to where they want the dollars to be spent. That's memorialized in a budget handed off to administration. And administration has excellent controls in place to ensure that that budget is executed according to the plan that you as a council laid out. If we put everything together, ultimately then, because of the outperformance on the budget for the year, your fund balance went up in the general fund from an unassigned fund balance of $8.8 million to begin the year to a $10.1 million fund balance to finish the year. That's a significant increase in real dollars, about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars overall. But I would encourage you to look at it as a percentage of spending instead, because as the budget changes each year from inflation... a nominal dollar approach to looking at your fund balance doesn't really work. Let's look at it as a percentage of spending either this year's or next year's. And you have a policy that you want your fund balance to be at least 40% of a year's worth of spending with a goal of 50%. And if you do the math on your unassigned fund balance at the end of 2019, it's at 49.4%, so well ahead of your minimum threshold and bumping your head up against the maximum or the desired threshold that you've established for yourself. My second metric for you when it comes to general fund operations or financial health, are you in line financially, health-wise, with the policy that you've set for yourself? And the answer to that is yes. You're within 40% to 50% range, and you're actually on the high end of that range with a 49.4% fund balance in the year. I think an excellent report for your general fund operations. I want to talk briefly about each of your enterprise funds. And we're going to look at those a little bit differently. As the name implies, enterprise is intended to be run like a business. So we're looking here as user fees covering the main cost of operations. And we can decide whether the user fees are adequate by whether or not this fund is generating operating income. You're going to see in each of these charts, revenue is in green, expenses are in blue, operating income is in gray. And if depreciation is significant, we're factoring that out and showing operating income without depreciation in orange. The ambulance fund has had a couple of very good years. Management of this fund is doing good work for you. The call volume has gone up as well. And the collections, which are always a challenge in the ambulance service, are also up as well. So as a result, revenue, you can see, has increased significantly each of the last couple of years, generating solid operating income as well. It takes about $3 million to run this fund on an annual basis. And that's just what your fund balance was at the end of 2019, about $3 million. About $1.2 million of that in cash and then 1.8 tied up in receivables. And that's also the challenge in the ambulance fund is just collecting on those receivables that are out there. The city's done a nice job looking at historical collect rates, setting up a reasonable allowance against that. But there is always going to be that lag in cash collections in the ambulance fund. But a good report for 2019. The environmental utility fund is one that the council's been monitoring and adjusting the rate structure to that over the course of the last several years. It has posted a very strong operating income each of the last several years. And it ends the year in 2019 with a $1.9 million fund balance in relation to your operations, a year's worth of spending. As we talk about these utility funds, though, I do want to remind the council that unlike the general fund, where fund balance is just there for operations and cash flow and contingency, have a capital component to them. And look at the fund balance or the net position of these funds. I would encourage you to consider what a reasonable operating reserve is for you and work with administration in the context of your improvement plan to ensure that the capital needs are addressed as well if this is where you plan to use, if that's where the plan for the resources is coming from. I know the environmental utility fund, you could ask for some capital expectations of this particular one. Recycling project fund, a new trash fee was implemented during 2019. You can see the revenue increase as a result of that. And after four years of operating losses in this fund, the first time in five years, a small operating income of about $15,000. This fund has about a $300,000 fund balance. So we're looking at about $50,000 worth of expenses in the recycling fund. Sanitary sewer fund is the second to last of the ones we'll be looking at tonight. This fund has generated operating income each of the last several years. Has a fund balance to end 2019 of about $4.3 million, which is just short of a year's worth of spending. But it put that reminder of the capital needs that insignificant or even insignificant sanitary sewer project, the capital reserves in this fund probably are not exactly where you want them to be. Cash balance is about $2.8 million on a $4.3 million overall reserve. So again, a comfortable place to be from an operating standpoint. I think the question would be, what is a reasonable capital reserve for this particular fund as you go forward? And now again, encourage that discussion, that dialogue with administration. The final fund is the streetlight utility fund. And this is where a lot of franchise fees associated with the electric activities in the city are showing up. You increased the franchise fees and actually reallocated some of these funds to another fund within the city during the year for other operations beyond the street lighting. So it looks like this fund's revenue is down a little bit, but that's just simply the way it's allocated from a greater pool. So we'll work with administration on what the amount that's going to be the future years for this fund. But this one has posted solid operating income each of the last several years at an $800,000 fund balance, so a very strong financial position. The allocation certainly seems reasonable to us for 2019. And again, as you have that new revenue stream coming in, you work with administration and can decide what that allocation might look like in future years. So I think the financial performance for the city, again, across the board, is very strong. Fund performance was excellent. Your utility funds, your enterprise funds, all seem to be performing well. And I think the only advice that I would have is to get the dialogue going regarding a reasonable capital reserve would be in each of your utility funds so everyone's on the same page regarding financial expectations and the expectations of financial position in these funds. So I will leave it at that. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you. And I'd be happy to stay on the line for as many questions as you have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for council members and for those listening, I just want to remind everyone that our council has an audit committee, which is the mayor, myself, and then a council member. And it's our job to meet independently with the auditors, separate and apart from staff. And this year, Councilmember Juneman was on the audit subcommittee with me. And we met and had another Zoom meeting with the auditors. And we were able to ask questions and review this report. And I have to say that it's a very excellent report. You folks did a really nice job. And I would commend Ms. Paul Seth and the Finance Department for the way that they manage the finances of the city. Very pleased with the outcome of this and the transparency of it and the fact that we can all be very proud about how we are stewarding the resources of our community. So with that, I'm going to go around and ask council members if they have any questions for Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Smith.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Knudsen.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Neblet.
None for me. Thank you.
And Councilmember Juneman.
No, thanks. Mine were answered last week.
Okay, then, I would entertain a motion concerning accepting the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending 12/31/2019.
Mayor, I move to accept the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended 12/31/2019.
Second. Moved by Smith, seconded by Juneman, the motion to accept the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending 2019. Councilmembers, any further discussion? Councilmember Smith?
Just my kudos to the team, not only to Ellie and her team, but all the department heads for their hard work managing the budget this year. So great job, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Knudsen.
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Neblet.
Here, here, what Brian said. Thank you.
Councilwoman Juneman?
What they both said, because people think that, you know, we got some credit from our auditors. But at least speaking for myself, what we want doesn't necessarily compute at all unless we have competent people trying to make it work. That's our staff.
So thank you, everyone. Okay, now for the vote. Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Knudsen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Neblet.
Aye.
Councilwoman Juneman.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Paul Seth. Moving on to our next agenda item, the new Maplewood Elementary School at 2410 Holloway Avenue East. Let's see. This one is going to be, Mr. Martin, are you presenting? Or is, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, you're presenting.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a, the city has received a development application from School District 622 for a project on the current site of the Maplewood Middle School on Holloway Avenue. As the council knows and is aware, this is actually the third school district project that has come through the entitlement process that the city is part of the school district's district-wide facilities plan and the referendum that was passed for those facilities. So the previous projects, John Glenn and Carver, are under construction. And then this is the third project for the district in Maplewood for this year. So the summary of the project is the school district is proposing to construct a new elementary school on this site. It would replace, then, the existing middle school that is on the site, which would be demolished after the elementary school is constructed. It requires two land use approvals from the city. The first is a conditional use permit, and the second is design review. So the site today is guided in our comprehensive plan for public or institutional uses that is consistent both with its current use as a school as well as the continuing use as a school under the application. It is zoned, a single-family, but we do, in our zoning ordinance, allow schools in any zoning district with a conditional use permit. So this application includes that request for CUP because the current school operation predates the zoning ordinance requirement for the CUP. And then the second item, the design review, is really the city's, the council and the CDRB's review of the building and site, the site plan and building in conformance with the city's ordinance requirements. So this is the proposed site plan that has been submitted by the district and its design team. So the new school would be constructed on the south. So the current middle school is kind of on the north half of the lot. The new elementary school would be constructed on kind of the far south half of the lot. What this does is it facilitates the construction of the school, of the new elementary school, without requiring the middle school to be demolished until the construction on the new building is complete. The new building is roughly the same size as the existing building, so just under 113,000 square feet. It would have an increase in enrollment from the current 725 students up to 800 elementary students in that new building. Once the old building is then demolished, that area would be converted into fields, essentially playfields for recreational uses for the district itself. The other thing to note is there has been some past event parking that's overflowed on the site. And the district does expect that to be reduced because of the elimination of the pool on the site. It would be eliminated with the middle school, and that function would no longer happen. And the events that happened with this pool would no longer take place here on this site. A couple of other things just to note on the site plan is the separation, you'll recall, and the other school projects. The district has, as a part of their site planning, separated both student drop-off and pickup that occurs during the peak times from the bus pickup and loading, bus drop-off and pickup. So in this case, the student, so any visitor parking, staff parking, and student pickup and drop-off would all occur in that north parking lot with a single access point from Holloway Avenue. And you can see the long drive access that allows for stacking during those peak times. And then the bus traffic would use Lakewood Drive. There would be a new access on Lakewood Drive. Again, that's exclusive for bus pickup and drop-off and as well as the loading dock for shipping and receiving. In terms of the building design, it's primarily a two-story building. There are some single-story portions of the building. And the materials include a tan brick, dark brick, as well as metal and precast architectural panels. Couple of the design details that were reviewed by the CDRB is first, the, just the site lighting. There would be lighting on the site for safety purposes for the parking areas. And we reviewed the preliminary lighting plan. And I do believe it does comply with the city's ordinance requirements on illumination levels at the property line. The second thing is just the amount of landscaping. The preliminary plans that were submitted with this development application do include fairly minimal landscaping. So this is a significant item that was talked about at the CDRB in really focusing on two areas. The first being significantly enhancing and providing additional screening on the east side of the building and parking areas to provide screening to the single-family homes that are directly east of the site and whose backyard abut the school property. And the second condition that was added by the CDRB is additional screening for the kind of the service area of the building. So where that loading dock and driveline are, substantially enhancing the landscaping in that area with the greater diversity of materials and with a higher quality landscape plan, provide just enhanced aesthetics, but also to provide some screening from the site improvements, which are shifting down to an area of the site today that is primarily used for recreational purposes. So those conditions, both on the enhanced screening on both the east and west side of those sites, are included as conditions of approval in your draft resolutions. So as we do with all projects, we did send neighborhood surveys to all properties within 500 feet. Because of the number, because of its close proximity to single-family homes, that was a significant number. So there were 172 properties that were notified. We did receive 10 responses, all of which were included in your packet. And as we have been doing recently with the change into the online meetings for both the CDRB, the Planning Commission, as well as the council, we did post a presentation of the project, a video presentation of the project on our website. We still held the public hearing at the Planning Commission on May 19th. And important to notice, we actually had our first person testify or speak at the public hearing at that Planning Commission hearing. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the two development application requests. And there are resolutions in your packet which would approve these projects with the conditions that are outlined in the resolutions. So Mayor and Council, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, for that report. You know, I certainly read the comments from the public and the comments from CDRB and the Planning Commission. And if I kind of put them into two different buckets, one had to do with kind of the condition of the streets in that area, potholes and that they need to be addressed. And the other bucket would be kind of trees and planting. So what I'd like to do is get staff's response, and it might have to be Mr. Thompson, concerning the potholes and the condition of Lakewood. And I think Lakewood predominantly, maybe not so much Holloway. But Mr. Thompson, or Mr. Love, are you still on the line?
Mayor and Council, yes, I am. So for our streets, we do design the streets to be able to support bus traffic. Existing conditions of Lakewood, it is nearing the end of its structural life. However, this particular road was actually looked at as a potential CIP project back in 2007. A survey was sent out to the residents along the road, and they voted not to participate in a CIP project. We do have this in our tenure plan. It is a future CI project still. As we move forward, I would not recommend doing a project until after the construction is completed so that we don't end up building a new road and then having the wear and tear of the construction activities as well. In the meantime, our staff will continue to pothole patch. And then also, this might be a candidate for some of our spot paving work that we do to provide relief to residents that are on roads that are still a number of years out from a CIP project.
Thank you, Mr. Love. And perhaps Mr. Thank you, Mr. Love, and perhaps, Mr. Thompson, can you talk about, I know that the school district did not submit a a plan in terms of trees and planting, and there was some question about the quality of, of plantings. Can you please comment on that?
Certainly, Mayor and Council. So yes, this, the, the landscaping on the site and the screening was a significant topic that was talked about both at the CDRB and Planning Commission. And that's really why those conditions are included in your resolution, which require a revised landscape plan be submitted to the city with all that additional screening and landscaping among the east and west sides. With, again, the comments that we typically have around providing a diversity of species and the, just the, the type of landscaping that's done, we would then review that to make sure it's consistent with those conditions of approval and the comments we've received from the CDRB and Planning Commission, and then we would ensure that that landscaping is installed and constructed as part of the project itself.
Thank you. And my last question, and then we'll ask for council questions too. What is the timeline projected for the construction of the new school and the demolition of the what is now Maplewood Middle?
Mayor and Council, so I, I believe we do have a representative of the school district on the line, or their architect, and they may have more specifics about the exact timing on both of those.
Certainly. Is that Sean Kelly?
Uh, yes.
Yes, it is. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
So the, the, in a high-level schedule, as it sits now, would essentially to begin construction toward the end of the summer, early fall, till likely September. And then that construction would continue through April of 2022, at which time, you know, the majority of the south side of the site would be complete, including the building. And then at the end of the 2022 school year, when Maplewood Middle is done for that school year, then the demolition of that building, and then the north half of the site construction would be completed by the end of that summer, so August of 2022.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Let's see if council members have any other questions. Councilmember Smith?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Knutson?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Neblet?
Yeah, just have a couple. I, there were a lot of comments, like you said, Mayor. The one thing that I, that I picked up on was the the amount of space for bus turnaround, and whether or not there is going to be enough space to do that. Could, um, I think, Mr. Kelly, is it? Could you talk about that a little bit?
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I, yep. I'm not sure it, I don't think Greg, our civil engineer, is on the call. Do you have specifics about the question? Is it relative to buses being able to turn around in that bus parking area? As it's designed?
Um, I'm trying to look. I, and it wasn't just one question, it was about, several people raised the question about whether or not there was going to be enough room for the buses to park, turn around, get out, and things like that. The other question I have is has the, has the district had any conversation with these folks, or how, when were these comments taken in comparison to? Just, do we know when the, when the comments were taken? And has there been any, um, has anybody gotten back to the residents to answer their questions?
Mr. Thompson, I think that's probably a question for you.
Excuse me. So, um, Mayor and Council, though, so when we first received a development application is when we send those neighborhood surveys out, so that would have happened at the very beginning of when we received the application back in probably like beginning part of May. I don't know how that times. I know the school district itself did some community engagement with, with the neighbors. I, I don't know how that times with them, so perhaps they could answer that. But usually what we do is we collect those comments, we review them, and then we incorporate any conditions or answers to those as part of our reports to the Planning Commission and CDRB, and all that has been posted on the city's website.
Okay. All right. For me. Thank you.
Councilmember Juneman?
Uh-oh. Well, I, this comes from both looking at the layout that Sylvia was referring to and the neighborhood comments. The arrangement of the buses when they pull in and have to turn around and back out, that was a concern by some people, and you know, it's a little hard on a drawing to figure out space-wise how that's going to work, but it's a, it appears to be a possibly legitimate concern. And then I thought also, the play space sort of looks like it's tacked on after everything else was planned, like, oh, we need a playground. And it's kind of like right by the bus area. And I question if it's the size of it, but also the location. Is that a wise combination? And again, again, go ahead.
Thompson, do you want to respond to that, and then we'll ask for Mr. Kelly's response as well?
Um, yeah, Mayor, I don't, I don't know if I have any particular insight on that issue. On, on the bus loading, I do know that in working on other school projects, oftentimes what happens is, you know, this, the bus pickup and drop-off is obviously all occurring at the same time, or kind of in this condensed time period throughout the day. And so it usually kind of functions as a, what's the best analogy to use? Kind of a, a, I'm not quite sure, but like as the, so on this, if you can see the site plan on the screen, all of the buses will kind of pull in to those parking stalls and either pick up or drop off the students. And they don't necessarily back out, but what happens is the buses that are on the far east side of the parking lot kind of start by going, just pulling forward and around that kind of circular turnaround at the east end of the parking lot, which then heads them straight in, straight out, and they kind of go one at a time as they, they're like an accordion out on the site, and so they're heading out onto Lakewood. So it's not every bus having to pull in and back out. It kind of functions all at the same time as, as they go in order out of the site. And it's hard to describe on, on, over the phone, but that's kind of how it usually typically happens. But why the playground is, is put there, I, I think perhaps the architect could best answer that.
Mr. Kelly, can you respond to the location of the playground, please?
Certainly. So I would just echo the comments about the bus drop-off. The buses would not be backing up. At any time, as mentioned, they would pull in and stack in the parking stalls that you can see on the site plan, and then in order to exit, they would just continue to pull forward and make their turnaround in the kind of widened section of that loop. And then as far as the playground goes, the, the playground, part of the criteria was to have that playground adjacent to the bus drop-off, because during the day, the bus area would double as hard surface play. So that playground is, is accessible from the student entry, which is on the east side of the building. You can access the playground from the east side of the building without walking through the, the bus area if in fact there was ongoing parking or anything like that in that area. But that bus drop-off does double as a hard surface play area, so striping for, you know, four-square. I think you're going to have a basketball hoop, things like that. So having those two spaces adjacent to each other was important. I don't know if that answered your question. The other constraint we have is you can see on the kind of north and the northeast side of the building, we actually have stormwater retention areas, so those wouldn't be ponds necessarily with standing water, but we do need those spaces for the stormwater to flow into for treatment. And that's just a limiting factor on the site, and you know, how many options do we have in terms of locations for a playground?
So, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. So the safety of the play area at dismissal time, for instance, will be reliant on staff supervision of getting everybody to their buses and so on, and not allowing them on the play space? I'm just having a little hard time with the play and the buses.
You know what they're doing. Are you talking about the, the hard surface play area?
No, no. No, no. No, the one that's a square on our map.
Yep. So from the, from that square that you're referencing, which would be the playground, there is a sidewalk from that space all the way into the building that, you know, so you can access that player area from the building without walking through the, the hard surface play area, which is also the, the bus.
Yeah, but my question is at dismissal time, because you know how kids are. This is going to be staff oversight then, that kids go to their buses, and other kids who aren't taking the bus will not be allowed on the playground, or what? Because otherwise, I, you kind of see where kids could dribble onto the playground and be around where the buses are when they're not bus.
So it is, it, yep, it would be fenced in. I, I suppose the, the operation piece of it would be a question for the district, I would think. So I don't know if Randy or Mike are available to help out with the, the operations of how dismissal works relative to bus pickup timing.
It's just, the location seems like it could become a problem, but I hope they have it covered, I guess, is my comment. And then Mayor, one more, one more thing?
Go ahead, Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. Um, you already heard it from Mr. Thompson, but I can't emphasize enough that screening, 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 and appropriate landscaping is a big deal here for two reasons. The neighbors are requesting it, and they live very close to this. And secondly, we kind of teach kids by example when we have a school building. So if we want to teach kids that Maplewood is an environmental city, we want sufficient trees and appropriate plantings. And they should be, if you ask me, striking, not something we thought of later. So you can't emphasize enough how important they are.
Thank you, council members. I have one follow-up question. I know one of the residents wrote in about a concern about water issues. And I think, Mr. Kelly, you talked a little bit about the water treatment. Are you aware that there was a water problem in someone's backyard as, for 47 years? When it rains, water runs off the higher ground that the school sits on, and down into a ditch behind his house. Mr. Kelly?
I guess I am not specifically aware of that particular issue. I do know that from an engineering standpoint, all of the stormwater on-site, whether it's from the, the roof of the building and/or the parking lot surfaces, would be managed on-site through the storm retention system and the rain gardens that are currently there that are being preserved. Do you, I guess, in order to address the specific item, I, I, you know, we would need to know what, what lot, you know, we'd be looking at just to make sure we're not impacting that condition.
I believe the notes indicate that it's 1865 Mary Jo Lane. Can you please take that, and staff too? I would ask that staff would follow up about the residents' concern about water runoff, and that this new project is not going to have a negative impact on their property, but rather that the new stormwater treatment and the rain gardens would adequately address those issues. Mr. Thompson?
Certainly. Yeah, Mayor, we can confirm, we, you know, we've reviewed this preliminary plan, which provides all of the stormwater facilities, but we can in our final review, ensure that it's, it's not impacting those neighbors that are concerned about it.
Thank you very much. Do we need to do anything to add that in, or is that sufficient that we've highlighted it for you during our discussion?
Mayor, I, I think it's sufficient. I mean, there's a condition in the resolution that says final plans need to be approved by the city engineer, so I think that covers us on, on the stormwater issues.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to make sure that we get that taken care of for the, for the neighbors. Are there any other questions?
Mayor, this is Kathy Juneman.
Okay, Councilmember Juneman?
Um, one thing about, I meant to ask Mr. Love, um, there were a couple of people that were asking about traffic control on Lakewood Drive, and how at busy times, people in the neighborhood have an issue with trying to get out of their driveways. Now, is that possibly going to be better, but because this is situated differently, or when you have elementary school kids, possibly more of them take the bus? I don't know, but there were two different people that brought that up from the neighbor.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, um, Mayor and Council, so the site today actually has an access on Lakewood Drive, but it's, it's share, it's on the far north side of the site. I can go back to the, um,
Right.
aerial photo. So you can see here, you can see just on the far northwest corner, there's actually an access on Lakewood Drive. So part of the bus and all of the traffic that's coming to the site, in addition to being able to use Holloway, there is that access on Lakewood. This site, as I mentioned, the only traffic now that will be using Lakewood is the bus, the bus pickup and drop-off. So the one time in the morning and one time in the afternoon. There is no physical way to get between those parking lots. So there's, there, all the traffic to the school that's not buses would all be using that Holloway access, which is much further to the east. And has that great, that larger stacking area for the drop-off, so it has a less tendency to flow out onto Holloway.
That would take care of this. Okay, thank you.
Okay, council members, then we have two motions before us. Do I hear a motion?
I move approval of the conditional use permit resolution for the new Maplewood Elementary School at 2410 Holloway Avenue East. Second.
Move by Juneman, seconded by Neblet. The motion to approve a resolution for a conditional use permit for a new elementary school to be constructed at 2410 Holloway Avenue East. I think we've had a pretty robust discussion, so let's move to the vote. Councilmember Smith?
Hi. Hello.
We'll come back to.
I said I.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neblet?
Aye.
Councilmember Juneman?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. There's a second motion concerning design review. Is there a motion for that?
I move design review approval subject to all the conditions by the commissions, the staff, and the staff resolving the issues we raised tonight.
Second.
Move by Juneman, seconded by Neblet, and I hope City Clerk Synth that you've got all of those provisos on there. Let's see if there's any further discussion on this discussion. Councilmember Smith?
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Knutson?
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Neblet?
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Juneman?
No, thank you.
All right, then let's vote. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neblet?
Aye.
Councilwoman Juneman?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Councilmembers, we removed item number three from the agenda tonight. Our last agenda item is the property maintenance code. And Mr. Thompson, this is yours as well.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So get this working. So as the council is aware, back in September of last year, the city adopted an ordinance establishing a rental housing licensing program. And, and the, the gist of the ordinance is that all rental properties in the city are required under this ordinance to be licensed by the city. The three primary goals for the ordinance, the first is just to maintain the city's housing stock, to make sure we're providing well-maintained and, and safe properties. The second is to provide a safe community, and then, thirdly, just to enhance our neighborhoods. As we, as the council has adopted that ordinance, we are kind of finalizing our implementation to, to launch that program very soon. And I know as we've gone through that ordinance work, we have discussed updating the city's property maintenance codes, and that's really the action before the council tonight, which is to adopt as our housing, as our, as our property maintenance code, the International Property Maintenance Code. So our ordinance, our city code today regulates properties in a number of areas. It's not just one section of the code, so we've listed some here that are particularly pertinent around code enforcement and property maintenance, and that includes nuisances, abandoned vehicles, swimming pools, and our comprehensive solid waste. But what's fairly unique to Maplewood is that we But what's fairly unique to Maplewood is that we actually have adopted kind of our own housing standards, and we have done, and our current code has done that by actually separating the top two here. We have a, a rental housing maintenance code, and we actually have an owner-occupied housing maintenance code. There's a ton of overlap, um, but, uh, they are separate and they do have some different provisions. And so what we, our staff is, is recommending and included for your consideration is essentially, um, rescinding those two, uh, housing codes that we've adopted and in its place adopting the International Property Maintenance Code. It is a code that is, uh, published and it's reviewed and adopted by the International Code Council. It's actually the same body that, uh, regulates and adopts the building codes, uh, the international building codes for both residential, commercial. And is, uh, because they do this, um, you may ask, well, why are we adopting the twenty-eighteen edition? Um, it's actually the most recent edition. So the, the, the ICC adopts or reviews, uh, the, the International Property Maintenance Code every three years, and so most recent edition is the twenty-eighteen. But one of the benefits of going with the, the IPMC is that it is regularly reviewed, um, and updated to, um, address, um, kind of emerging trends or things that are not currently addressed in the code. Probably the, the main reason that, that, uh, we think it makes sense for the city to do this is because we've adopted our, our own housing codes and because we have, you know, don't regularly update them, we have just found that enforcement is more difficult in administering our code. So there are gaps in our, our housing codes today, um, and there is some ambiguity, ambiguity in, in what the code requirements, whereas when we've reviewed the IPMC, it's a very detailed, but very specific, uh, and provides clear and specific guidelines around housing maintenance. To note just on the actual year, um, we have, we are recommending that we not actually automatically adopt future additions. So in twenty-twenty-one, there would be a future addition or update to the IPMC. We are not recommending that we automatically adopt that as part of this ordinance, but we anticipate that as each of these new codes come out, we would review them at staff, determine if, um, there's any concerns or issues, and we just bring back a code amendment, um, to adopt those future codes as they become available. So what, uh, what will the, the IPMC do? Um, I, I think it can be fairly summarized in, in a couple ways. One, it will help, uh, meet the goals of the rental licensing program. So I think a lot of the feedback that we heard, uh, the council, uh, at your meetings, as well as our community engagement around the rental licensing program for property owners was wanting to make sure that the program is, was administered fairly, um, it was clear and it was consistent. And so we think the IPMC is a better tool, uh, to provide kind of that clarity, fairness, and consistency in administering the inspection component of the rental licensing program. So that, that's the, that's a significant portion of why we're recommending this. Um, the second, uh, one of the second pieces, it, it does provide some additional exterior requirements. So our housing codes today are very focused on interior elements of units, uh, but, uh, this, the code would provide, um, more regulations on the exterior. So things like, uh, safe, you know, like sidewalks and driveways, making sure that there are safe handrails, that type of thing on the exterior of the property. And then the, the third piece, um, what we don't include in our code today is we don't actually have any occupancy limits. So based on the size of bedrooms and living spaces, we don't currently establish the num, the maximum number of people that can live there. Those regulations do exist in the IPMC, so it would establish some occupant, occupancy limitations based on the size of a, of a, of a dwelling unit. And lastly, because it is kind of, um, connected or, or consistent with the building code, it actually references, uh, a lot of the building code requirements. So it brings in some of those, uh, life safety, fire, and electrical requirements from the building code. It makes it enforceable under the property maintenance code as well. So those are kind of the, the, the main, um, benefits that we see, uh, to, to adopting the IPMC. We are not, uh, the, the draft ordinance before you does not adopt the entire IPMC. We've actually, uh, spent a lot of time going through it and identifying, um, items in our current code that we already regulate well, and actually, uh, we prefer our current regulations over the IPMC's regulations. And so this is just those list of things that we are not, uh, adopting the IPMC requirements, but we are actually retaining what the city currently does on these seven items. So that just includes our violation process, our process around issuing notices and correction orders, um, the appeals process, um, and then some of our specific regulations for long grass, abandoned vehicles, swimming pools, and our solid waste. As, as the council knows, our solid waste ordinance is very comprehensive. Um, I think the section in the IPMC is like two sentences long on solid waste, so we, we thought ours was, uh, uh, much better on that. So we're, we're confident that as we've reviewed everything in, in detail, we've kind of got the best of both. We've got what is working well in our codes today, uh, but adopting the, the IPMC where we think we can, uh, provide clearer and better, uh, requirements going forward on those items. With that, um, I should note that back, um, I think it was the end of last year, we had actually brought this to the Housing and Economic Development Commission, HEDC. So since they, uh, had kind of reviewed the rental licensing at one of their meetings last year, we actually brought, uh, the housing, this, the IPMC to them to, to discuss the implementation, and, uh, they did, uh, recommend that the city adopt the IPMC as part of our implementation of rental housing. So with that, uh, we, there are two actions being requested by the council. The first is to, to adopt the ordinance, uh, that would repeal, um, our current housing code provisions and replace it with the twenty-eighteen IPMC with the modifications. And then secondly, adopt a resolution allowing for summary publication. So with that, Mayor, the, the ordinance would be effective upon publishing in our official newspaper, and we would begin administering, um, the, the property maintenance code, um, when it becomes effective, uh, in a week or so. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I have a question. Uh, you know, we've been working on this for quite some time, uh, and we adopted, you know, the ordinance back in September of twenty-nineteen. Can you kind of give us an update for the council and also for those listening on where we are? I know that we have hired, uh, a housing inspector. Could you give us a little bit of, uh, background about how we are implementing this or will be implementing this, and then also kind of the timeline when we expect that we will be, uh, starting our first inspections of rental housing, uh, in our city?
Uh, certainly, Mayor. Um, so yes, we have been working very hard on getting this program, um, launched and underway, and we are very close. Um, in terms of what we've been doing, uh, this year in twenty-twenty, we have hired, uh, the two staff in community development that will be, uh, administering the program. So we've hired our neighborhood preservation specialist, Sam Drury, um, who will kind of be the, the lead on the housing code and inspection component. Um, she has experience. Uh, she is actually, came to us from the city of Cottage Grove, where she administered their rental housing program, so a significant amount of experience in managing a similar program. And then we've also, um, Alfreda Ma Clark, uh, started with us, uh, about three or four weeks ago, uh, to help on the administrative side of, uh, the licensing process. So they are on board with us. Um, they are well underway in getting, uh, familiar with our program, and then ultimately working to, to finish all of the kind of, uh, systems and applications and processes to figure it out. So we are there. I will tell you, our, everything is ready to go. Uh, we are just, the final step is just to launch it in conjunction with our new software program for licensing, and we expect that to happen, uh, in August.
Okay, and thank you. Just as a reminder too, uh, can you just comment about the fact that, uh, this program is designed to pay for itself? Uh, can you kind of explain that? I did have a question about, you know, at this time with COVID, how is it that you're hiring staff? Uh, can you kind of, uh, address that, please, for those listening? Thanks.
Certainly. So, um, Mayor and Council, uh, when, when you adopted the program, uh, in September, and then when we adopted the fee schedule, um, at the end of last year, we, um, at staff did a kind of a comprehensive analysis to say, what are the staffing costs that the city will have to administer the program, and then what are the fees that will be needed, uh, to support, uh, those expenses of the city with the, the goal of, I always say, uh, two ways. One, that, uh, the, the, the city's general taxpayer is not, um, is not paying for the program itself, that it's the, the rental properties themselves is, as their license fee is actually paying for those expenses. And that is true, but also, you know, to also ensure that, you know, the, the rental property license holders, so the property owners and landlords, um, aren't, uh, paying excess fees that we actually create revenue on. So it's kind of, we try to create the greatest balance that the fees for the, to obtain a license from the city cover the city's costs, uh, to, to administer the program. And that's how we set those fees, and we will continue to monitor them to make sure, um, that we're, that we're continuing to do that.
Thank you. And what I really appreciate this program is, you know, when you provided the background, I mean, the real reason for this was to make sure that we've got clean, secure, well-maintained, crime-free housing, rental housing for residents in Maplewood, and that, uh, we have some standards and that we know that certainly we have some excellent landlords in Maplewood. There's no doubt about it. But we also have some very troubled and troubling properties, and this is a way to, uh, make sure that we are really, uh, enhancing the safety of our rental units and, and improving the standards in them as well. So with that, councilmembers, questions? Uh, Councilmember Smith?
Just, uh, just to be clear, these, these will be consistent guidelines for both, uh, rental homes as well as, uh, owner-occupied?
Uh, Mayor and Council, that is correct. Uh, the regulations would apply equally to, to all properties.
And then, uh, with the maximum occupancy rules, uh, I, I assume those are flexible enough to accommodate larger families?
Yes, yes, Mayor and Council, they are, they are hardly onerous. I, I don't know the exact numbers, but I, it, it does allow larger families to live together. Um, we did confirm that they're not onerous requirements in maximum occupancy.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Knutson?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Neblet?
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Thompson, you know, I remember when we had, um, the public hearing on these new, well, when you were trying to develop, um, the whole coding process and everything. And what I remember is that some of the larger apartment owners were concerned that there would be kind of like double requirements for inspections, um, because HUD had their own inspections, and then the city was going to have their inspections and we're kind of going to be doing the same kinds of things. Is it safe to say that, um, with this new, let me get it right, IP? What is it? The IP, whatever?
C.
Yes.
IPMC.
The IMP, yes, that one. Um, is it safe to say, or, or is it reasonable to assume that these same kinds of inspections kind of, that will be happening, kind of coincide with, um, the kinds of inspections that HUD would do, and that somehow or another there wouldn't be any, like, double inspection on top of each other?
Certainly, Mayor and Council. So we haven't done a comprehensive look of all the HUD regulations on what they're inspecting versus the IPMC, but I'm confident to, to know that the, the city's focus is, is narrow and we're not looking to overlap and to, um, regulate properties differently, uh, and inspect properties against different standards than what other requirements are already in place at either the state or federal level.
Okay, cool. Well, I, in reading this, in reading this new code, I do think it is clear and it is fair, and I hope people can, um, do it consistently, but it seems really understandable and, uh, well, good luck. Thank you.
Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I, I think this has been a long time overdue. I'm so glad that we said let's get going and that our staff has taken it on. Um, and there are two, in my mind, there are two reasons. First of all, that everyone, whether you own or rent, has a decent place to live. But I also think it's going to help neighborhoods. Because, you know, many neighborhoods have one or two problem properties or troubled properties, as we call them, and people get so frustrated when they don't know what standard to expect and how come they can look like that and blah, blah, that whole thing. I think this is going to help the problem of people seeing that everybody's property should be nice because then we're all better off. We all like where we live. So I, I just think this is going to help everyone. So I really thank staff for getting on this and, and taking it on, and I think it's, like I said, been long overdue.
Thank you, councilmembers. Uh, we have two motions before us. Do I have a motion?
I move an ordinance repealing the rental and owner-occupied housing maintenance codes and creating a new property maintenance code and adopting in part the International Property Maintenance Code with certain modifications.
Second.
Move by Juneman, seconded by Neblet. The motion as outlined in our packet. I'm sure, uh, City Clerk Synth can take it right from the packet. That was a long one. Okay, further discussion? Councilmember Smith?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Knutson?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Neblet?
None for me.
Councilmember Juneman?
No, thank you.
Okay, then all those in favor, Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Neblet?
Aye.
Councilmember Juneman?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. And we have a second motion that requires four votes. Is there a motion?
I further resolve authorizing publication by title and summary of said ordinance.
Second.
Move by Juneman and seconded by Neblet. The motion to adopt the resolution authorizing publication by title and summary. Uh, Councilmember Smith, is there any discussion first, councilmembers?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Knutson?
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Neblet?
None for me, thank you.
Councilmember Juneman?
No, thank you.
Hearing, no further discussion. Now under voting, Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Knutson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neblet?
Aye.
And Councilmember Juneman?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and that concludes the business portion of our council meeting. And what I'd like to do in closing, uh, you know, this has been a really challenging time with the pandemic, with extended restrictions, uh, recently with the killing of George Floyd at the hand of four Minneapolis police officers, the ensuing protests and then riots. And, you know, I think it was probably the first time that Maplewood has ever had a curfew. Uh, we had a curfew for a couple of days, and I wanted to invite my fellow councilmembers to weigh in with their thoughts on, uh, the time that we find ourselves in right now. So with that, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Thursday last week, I took my eleven-year-old son down to Lake Street and then to Thirty-Eighth and Chicago, and sometimes it takes seeing things through a child's eyes to, to really appreciate and understand the gravity of it. And one of the things that Zachary said was, I, I just can't imagine being a kid and living in this neighborhood and, and how frightened I would be. And to think about his empathy for what it would mean to be afraid of those that are there to protect you, and how heartbreaking that was, was, was pretty incredible. Um, I'm proud of the work we've been doing in Maplewood. I feel like we have, uh, we've leaned into this conversation. I think the work that we did with the task force, the work that Chief Nado is continuing to do, it, it has, in my mind, decreased the, the fear on both sides, both from, from the fear. the fear of residents, in particular residents of color, as well as the fear of police for being, for being criticized and persecuted for the actions of a few. I think opening that conversation has been, has been a great avenue for reducing those anxieties on both sides, and I think that's a really critical first step. But I'm, I am hoping, hoping, hoping that some good will come of this. And I do think that I have hope for that, and I think it, I think it will happen. You know, as a white, middle-aged male, I will never understand fully what it means to be a person of color in America. It's, it's not fair to think I ever could understand. But what I will do is I will stand with them. I will stand with my, my fellow residents and, and do what I can to help. And I think that's, that's all we can ask. So thank you for the opportunity, Mayor.
Hello?
Mayor, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I could not make that little button work. What I said was, I wanted to thank Councilmember Smith for his heartfelt comments and for his candor during this challenging time. I really appreciate your comments. So with that, Councilmember Knutson?
Well, you know, I'm older than most, so I remember the 60s very well, and, you know, they were effective protests at that time. Unfortunately, things didn't change as much as we had all hoped, but we keep on trying. So even during this time of COVID, I've said in the past, you know, that I think there's going to be a reset. And, you know, when things like this occur, you start to think of your own situations and your own, you know, do you really have prejudice? Are you really open-minded? But I think this time, I think the reset is actually going to occur. People are thinking deeply into their own situations, and have I actually unintentionally or joined in some kind of discrimination, whether collectively or individually. So I think everybody that I know, and everybody that I see, everybody I work with, is really starting to take a very self-review of their own situation, and realize that just being passive, and not a bad guy, not a racist or whatever, probably isn't enough. So I think I really appreciate this council. I appreciate what Scott Nadeau has said in his emails, and what he said tonight. And I really feel that the dialogue with police and the dialogue with the community is really going to help. Thank you.
Council, thank you, Councilmember Knutson, for your comments. Councilmember Neblet?
Thank you, Mayor. This has been really hard for me. I wrote something down. I'm going to try to read it. So just bear with me here. "I stand in solidarity with protesters across the country who are responding to the countless murders of black men and women across this country for the past 400 years. As a black woman whose family comes from Georgia but has lived in Minnesota for the past 30-plus years, and has three black Hispanic young adult children, I understand the terror. I also understand wanting to change things. That's why in 2016, our city called together a 13-member citizens panel to look at the use of force policies and make recommendations. We spent five months, meeting every Thursday, to learn, to build relationships, and imagine how things could be done. This was not easy or fast, but effective. Guided by President Obama's 21st Century policing, and the hiring of our Public Safety Director Scott Nadeau, our police department is committed to community policing. We are extremely fortunate that we, as a city, and as a public safety department, have done some of the work that allows officers to protect and serve. If you look at the Maplewood Public Safety Annual Report for 2019, you'll see exactly what our officers are doing in Maplewood. When someone defaced the mosque in our city, it was the police officers that went and power washed the building to remove the hateful language. Yes, they do arrest people, they investigate crimes, but they also look for opportunities to build relationships in service to our community. Of course, we can always do better. But I also think we are so far ahead of many police departments. We will continue to do better. I'm proud of the work that the Use of Force Task Force did, and I'm proud of the work our police officers continue to do. Please let me be clear. I'm under no illusion that policing isn't a hard job, or that things can happen. Mistakes will be made. However, I'm confident that the work that has been done so far, we are in a much better place than many. We are a city that will fight for equity, equality, and justice for all."
Thank you, Councilmember Neblet. I really appreciate your comments, and, you know, "justice for all," when I led us all in the Pledge of Allegiance, those are the last words that we said. And we really do mean that, and I appreciate all of your work with the Use of Force Task Force, and your candor with everyone tonight. Councilmember Juneman, closing comments?
Okay, first I have to say, wow. And I can't tell you what it means to me to follow Sylvia. But first of all, I really would like to thank all of our staff, again, and I mean everybody, IT, planning, engineering, DMV, finance, parks and rec, everybody, and of course, public safety, for getting us through the pandemic, and then, a step further now, still being able to open up and offer a few more services to people in an even greater time of uncertainty. Our staff is really dedicated, and I think we owe them a debt of gratitude. And we have neighbors of color, very Latino, and there are two young people, a 21-year-old and an 18-year-old. And the 18-year-old young man, who is an incredible young person, said, told me this past summer, he said, you know, "I'm very fortunate to have been raised here." They moved in when he was like, not quite two. And, and he said, "And yet, I have had some feelings of what it feels to be like on the outside, particularly in school." But he said, "I have to say, living in this city is very comforting." And that really struck me. He lives right next door to me. I know he comes from a background that hasn't always enjoyed this, and he's comforted by living here. Incredibly wonderful to hear. And he's going to be a magnificent, whatever he decides to be. Right now, he wants to be a lawyer. And he said, "I'm going to take with me the things I have experienced here." That's a wonderful thing to hear as somebody in my position. And he was just saying it to me as a neighbor. And that brings me to, again, thanking our public safety people all the time, everyone in police and fire and EMS, and especially the chiefs and the public safety director, especially in the last two weeks. How incredibly difficult it must be to do their jobs now, and how well they continue to do them. So all I can say is, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'm pretty sure I speak for almost everybody who lives here. I, I never thought, as did anyone, I suppose, that I'd be an office to go through something like this. I think at the end of this, now I can say I've done it all. And finally, I would ask our citizens to continue to observe hand hygiene, and social distancing, and any other safety measures we're asked to follow, because the pandemic thing is not over. And there are compromised people, not all living in protected environments, or congregated environments, but in their houses, who need and appreciate the fact that we will continue to try to live safely. And again, thank you to everyone. And I've sat on a lot of councils now, and I have to say, this one is, in my mind, the most outstanding. We have faced some big things, but I just appreciate the way we're meeting them. So thank you. Love you.
Thank you, Councilmember Juneman. And thank you, staff. Thank you for all of those listening tonight. Certainly, our work is cut out for us. I am confident that we will take this opportunity and time to really bring and usher in new change to our community. We will continue along the positive path that we have taken over these last four years in really bringing change and equity and inclusion into our community. I would just leave everyone with this, that we would, each individual, ask what we can do individually to help bring about that change, because as a council member, as the mayor, I assure you that we will continue to ask what we can do to encourage that type of true change in our community, and how we can make that happen. So with that, councilmembers, I am going to adjourn, and I thank you all for your participation tonight. And please stay well, take care, and we'll talk, hopefully, we'll see each other, some of us might see each other at our next council meeting. So with that, we are adjourned, councilmembers.
Thank you, Mayor.